Good evening. It's Thursday, July 19th at 7:30. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Claussen to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Diane Smith.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Hildebrandt.
Here.
Mr. Parker. Mr. Sinaki. Ms. Scripture.
Ms. Cindy Smith. Here.
I got a couple of requests from Dave that you make sure your microphone's on at all times, and then if you need to speak, just speak into the microphone. He was having trouble catching some voices. Victoria, can you please note that Mr. Sinaki came?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So, we are missing one member. Oh, actually, two members, Jay Parker and Ree Scripture right now. So, we're going to go ahead and have Matt and Greg vote for the minutes. So, we were presented the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Ed, I'm sure I make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the June 21st, 2018 meeting.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Support.
Mr. Hildebrandt.
Support.
Mr. Sinaki.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. So, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration of a request for a temporary use pursuant to Sections 34-542, Section 5, and 34-1049 of the Land Development Regulations for a location at 1241 West 14 Mile Road. Our planner for McKenna is here, Newen Mario Ortega, if you'd like to come to the podium.
I'll just be going over my review letter for this request dated July 9th of this year. As mentioned, this is a request by the applicant for a temporary use in an existing commercial location. This would be located in the Claussen Center and at located at 1241 West 14 Mile. Their proposal is for a temporary retail use for holiday decorations and costumes for Halloween. So, it would be a spirit Halloween location. They have not indicated when they would begin. However, they have indicated that they would cease operations and be out of the space by November 16th of this year. So, when it comes to temporary uses, we have several standards to consider based on the Land Development Regulations. I'll go over them and also just some general information about what is being proposed. So, as I mentioned, this proposal is for a retail commercial use, and this site is located in the Westgate zoning district. So, retail uses are a principal permitted use in the Westgate district. So, it meets that requirement in that district. We do note that when it comes to verification, that the owner of the property has been consulted and is in favor of this. We haven't received any documentation to that effect. So, that's just one of the eventual conditions I will list, is that we request that they provide some type of verification of that. With regard to the ordinance requirements, mainly when it comes to temporary uses, they are temporary in nature. So, as to that effect, the maximum allotted time for such a temporary use is six months. If, as mentioned, they haven't proposed a start date, but if we were to maximize the date and they started operations tomorrow, on July 20th, and they ceased operations on their indicated date of November 16th, you're basically looking at about a four-month period or about 121 days. So, the proposed four-month use of the location meets our six-month standard maximum. We do note that because this is an existing operational commercial center, they'd be utilizing the system of drives and the parking lots and the access off of 14 Mile. So, we have no concerns with regards to the adequacy of the site to function when this uses in operation. And I would just note that I did a rough estimate of the existing square footage of the structure versus the existing parking spaces. And they do meet, the amount of spaces provided does meet the zoning ordinance standards if it was to be completely in full operation. So, they do meet that standard. Just as a note, hours of operation, they haven't proposed when the time of days they'd be operating. However, in the Westgate district, there are no specific restrictions, and that is a heavy commercial area noted for commercial activity. So, anticipating that during, closer to the holiday, as it gets there, they'd be operating longer hours, I don't see that as any kind of issue, because once again, it's right there at the intersection of 14 Mile and Crooks Road. And then finally, excuse me, not finally, but with regards to signage, the applicant has provided some detailed information as proposed signage. They have indicated that they would like to have a wall sign that is about four feet by 28 feet in dimension, or about 112 square feet in total area within the Westgate district and per our sign regulations. The amount of signage allowed for a retail operation is based upon, it can increase based upon the increased distance from the primary road. That's mainly to allow for and ensure visibility of any proposed signage. I did walk the site, and utilizing a measuring wheel, we found out it's confirmed that it's about 279 feet distant from 14 Mile Road property line. So, based on our ordinance standards, between 150 and 299 feet from the property line, they are allocated 100 square feet of signage. So, the proposed 112-square-foot sign is just a little bit too big. So, the applicant will have to amend their requested signage to be in compliance with the 100-square-foot maximum. And then finally, the responsible party has been indicated on the application in front of you, Shannon Flannery of Allen Park, Michigan. And while you do have the authority to request any type of performance guarantee, given to the nature and use of this request, we don't believe a performance guarantee will be necessary. So, at this time, we would recommend that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant approval of the proposed temporary use, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the use is allowed to operate from July 20th, 2018, to November 16th of 2018, subject to them receiving a certificate of occupancy from the Building Department. Two, that evidence of property owner authorization shall be submitted to the Building Department. Three, that no outdoor display or storage of any material is permitted. Four, any signage should only be pursuant to a permit issued by the Building Department that meets all signage regulations of Chapter 36 of the Land Development Regulations. Five, that any noncompliance with any of the conditions of approval will provide the city police department with the authority to immediately shut down operation of any sales from the space until such time that the noncompliance issues are addressed. And finally, sixth condition would be that the premises shall be left in room clean conditions with no evidence of the temporary use remaining after the allocated period, including but not limited to removal of any and all signage from the site. So, with that, I will gladly entertain any questions.
Any questions for our planner?
I just had one quick question, and it was more for the applicant, really, because in our package, we had a photo of the Claussen Center sign. And I didn't know if they were proposing to put in a temporary sign into that as well as the wall sign?
Yes, they did have a picture of what I assume, because this operation has been in there in previous years, and I assume, because it's right on the Claussen Center sign, that they are proposing to be, proposing a wall sign. But yes, I had that question as well. Given the fact that we don't have that detailed information, I went off mainly the detailed cut sheets that indicate the dimensions, because I don't even have the dimensions of the proposed ground monument sign, temporary applique. So, at this time, they could apply for additional signage, they just have to meet the additional standards of the zoning ordinance for signage. They still have to apply and receive a signed permit anyway for both the wall sign, the 100-square-foot wall sign, and if they prefer a ground monument sign as well. So, you could make a condition, just make a condition that they have to receive an appropriate building permit.
And that would be covered underneath your bullet point number four for your recommendation, correct? The wall sign and the monument sign?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to inform the board, I did call the phone number the applicant gave, and I left a message. They didn't pick up.
Thank you for your efforts.
It wasn't clear, is this the same organization that had that space in previous years? I think the name keeps changing, so I don't...
Yeah, looking at the previous application, it was an LLC at that time. This is a private individual. I believe it's the same, but...
Yeah, it just switches names just a little bit from year to year, but it's the same group of people, a different person applying this year. So, I think it's Halloween USA one year, and Halloween City the next, and Halloween. LLC now, so...
We haven't had any complaints from previous years.
No. I was expecting more complaints through the years that I've worked here, and I've actually had no complaints with all the temporary uses you guys have approved through the years.
So, you had mentioned you wouldn't recommend a performance guarantee, but doesn't the city require a bond for a temporary use?
We used to require site cleanup bonds for like the pumpkin sales, the Christmas tree sales, and stuff like that. Since this is inside a private building, and they're not supposed to have any outdoor displays, I believe, per their application, it's not necessary if we have one or not.
Okay. We didn't require one last year?
I was out of town when they reviewed the packet, so...
And based on my review of the previous application, no, they did not.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the planner?
Are there any, as y'all have done these in the past, are there any mechanisms in place for some kind of confirmation on the November 16th date that all those operations would be ceased and the site would be cleaned up?
You can actually put it in your motion to have it cease and desist on the 16th, and then I go out and do the inspections. If there is violations, then the city would correct those violations or order the shopping center to correct those violations.
Okay.
Now, given the fact that the applicant isn't here, are we just supposed to assume they're going to have normal business hours as the rest of that center? Or would it be the city's recommendation that we should limit their hours of business?
Within the district, excuse me, within the district, there are no limitations currently as a requirement of approval. Given that this is a temporary use and you have the authority, if you so wanted, you definitely could impose some kind of restriction.
Is anything in that district 24 hours?
The right aid, oh, next door, I don't know, it's not 24 hours.
I don't believe anything is 24 hours in that district.
I think so. So, given that discussion, would it be reasonable to say that based upon there's no 24-hour operation in that district, the hours of operation are 6:00 AM to midnight?
Yeah, or less, whatever their business plan, not to exceed 6:00 AM to midnight or whatever. That would be reasonable.
I think that's fair.
I think administration is okay with that.
And usually, we clear up any discrepancies here with the applicant, since they're not here, not able to be here. Do they get official notification that they have to come back and see you for the certificate of occupancy and the sign regulation confirmation, whatever they have? So, we could, I guess what I'm going for in that is that we have in the past said that based upon the building administration assessment, they can add the appropriate standard requirements that were not able to be discussed here. So, that we, I guess so that we don't have to come back and have another review.
Yeah, I don't know if we have standards, it's a standard policy on that. You guys can direct me to take care of it next week when the normal business working hours, Monday through Friday, to call the applicant and tell them what the information they need to provide. Are you okay with that, or did I misunderstand the question?
That also, and if there was, basically, if there was anything else that came up in the discussion that seemed to be out of the ordinary for that district, you would just give them the instructions, and that would be it.
So, you're giving me authority to make judgment calls on this one? If something pops up that wasn't addressed at the meeting? Is that...
I would be comfortable with that. I don't know that we would want to, we would want to wait until the next month to try to, you know, to bring that to a resolution. If, you know, if, I guess I would word it, if the building administration feels comfortable with their assessment, they could give the applicant any requirements that were not able to be discussed here. And if the applicant had a problem, then he has the right to...
And that's really what it would be, is that, you know, if you were to grant approval with contingencies, the applicant would have to meet all those contingencies in order to receive their approval. And then they'd have to remain in compliance with all other applicable ordinances. And if they were, they wanted to request something that was above and beyond the ordinance requirements, then they have the opportunity to come back to whichever body governs that and ask again. But, you know, they have to meet all the contingencies first, and then they have to remain in compliance with all the ordinances that Jim enforces, so...
Is it standard, or should we say that?
It's standard, and just know that the department's going to make decisions based on previous years applicants and stuff. We're not going to vary and say, you know, something that we've never had before. So, it's just going to be, if we have to make a judgment call on something that wasn't addressed tonight, it's going to be following the previous years, same application, so... Okay, same applications and procedures.
Okay.
To make sure I understood you correctly, for the signage use, based on the amount or the distance, excuse me, from the, I'm assuming that was the monument sign from the road, which was 279 feet, that is a 100-square-foot allowable sign? Is that the maximum that they're allowed?
Correct.
Very good. And they're asking for 112?
Correct.
Okay.
For the wall sign, for the proposed wall sign.
Okay.
The banner hanging on the front of the building.
Banner hanging on the building, thank you. Okay.
But they could have that plus what's on the monument sign?
One of the tenant spaces on the monument sign. You know they're going to have somebody dressed in a costume out front dancing around, so...
That's past practice?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the 112 was four by...
28. Yeah, that's right, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, for instance, if they already had the sign at four by 112, is that three additional feet along the facade of that building worth quibbling over? You'd have to be really a keen eye to pick up three feet at 250 feet away, so...
I guess I would make the recommendation, if we have sign issues in this town, is let's stick with what the regulations say. The applicant's not here to make his point, anyway.
I agree with that.
Does anybody have any other comments about that?
No, I concur.
I agree.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to...
I have to open up a public hearing, even though there's nobody here. So, it is 7:52, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing nobody in the public, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as requested, based on the recommendation of the city planner, the bullet points including the use is allowed to operate from July 20th, 2018, through November 16th, 2018, hours of business from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, subject to receiving a certificate of occupancy from the Building Department. Bullet point number two, evidence of property owner authorization shall be submitted to the Building Department. Bullet number three, no outdoor displays or storage shall be permitted. Item number four, any signage shall be only pursuant to a permit issued by the Building Department, meeting all signage regulations of Chapter 36 of the Land Development Regulations. Item number five, noncompliance with any of the conditions of approval will provide the city police department with the authority to immediately shut down operation of any sales from the space until such time that the noncompliance issues are addressed. And bullet point number six, the premises shall be left in a room clean condition with no evidence of the temporary use remaining after the allowed period, including but not limited to the removal of any and all signage.
Thank you, Cindy.
And perhaps, item number seven, we can give the administration the authorization to impose additional restrictions not discussed at this meeting, since the applicant is not in attendance.
I have a motion, are there any discussions?
I think we'd like to, I'd like to add, based upon Jim's statement, which I thought was really good, that the building's authorizations would be based on the building administration's judgment, based on the previous year's similar temporary uses in that location.
Okay. You agree?
I agree.
Okay. Any other comments? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hildebrandt.
Yes.
Mr. Sinaki.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carried. So, the next item on the agenda is public discussion. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Are there any other business, Jim?
There was a mention at the last Planning Commission meeting that an applicant might propose changing a ground monument sign to an LED ground monument sign in a district that doesn't allow them. So, that might be the next variance that comes in front of you. So, start looking at the signs around town, ground signs, and getting your heads clear on what they're going to look like, so... That's the only thing I believe that's going to come in front of this board here in the near future.
Is there a section of the ordinance that deals, and why was it specifically stated LED?
It was a site plan review process, a remodeling of a space, and when it was approved in that district, a ground monument sign was allowed. Now, the ground monument signs are not allowed in that district. But since it went through the site plan review process, it was determined to allow the site to be developed with the ground monument sign. And then they proposed to change it to an LED ground monument sign, which was mine and other people's interpretation that's changing the sign. Because we have difference, we define ground monument signs and LED signs differently. So, that's why there would be a variance. I don't think the issue of installing the ground monument sign at the proposed location of the site plan is the issue. It's just changing it from a standard ground monument sign to an LED sign. So, we actually have one in front of City Hall, so...
Okay.
So, the LED sign, that would scroll, what you're telling me?
Yeah, they received site permission approximately three years ago, and through the years, there was issues with extending it and the projects coming to a completion, and there was a request to change it to an LED sign, so... And the only way for them to get that request, or the only body that could hear that request would be the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there any real history on that? Are we just a little bit behind the times in terms of, you know, everybody's going to more elaborate and computer-controlled signs with whatever display mechanism that they're using, just because that's the technology now, and it's probably cost-effective to do that kind of stuff? And so, what, is there something, is there something we ought to look at or read or compare to that would give us guidance? Because I don't, I don't, yes, it's changing, yes, it's changing a sign that was, that is no longer allowed, so you get into that particular scenario. But then again, is it only changing because, you know, the fixed placard type of a sign is now not necessarily a lot less expensive than a computer-controlled rolling sign? And you can do a lot more with a computer-controlled rolling sign.
Yeah, the technology has outpaced our ordinance. If you look at the sign in front of City Hall, it's just red, and it rotates at a slower speed. And then you look at TNI Credit Union across the street, it's much brighter, and... And then you look at TNI Credit Union across the street, it's much brighter and the colors are, or the, the diodes are closer together and stuff, so. Actually, technology on that has changed quite a bit. The only policy that we have currently is you can't put a white background on your LED sign because it's distracting the drivers. I don't know if you've ever driven past one at night and they flash the white background with the red or black lettering, and it, it looks like the headlights of a car coming at you, so. That's the only, and that's a policy, that's not even in our ordinance, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Anything else?
So I guess, Mr. Ortega, if that comes before us, we're going to need a lot of help.
Yeah, that's true, because, just briefly, yeah, absolutely, we'll review the existing standards. And as Jim mentioned, it's mainly a safety issue. Previous regulations with regards to strobing effects and for, for distraction of drivers. And so while, as you mentioned, the new technology allows people, basically when you had the old, like, and the most obvious applicable use is gas station prices. See, you know, in the past, they would have the plastic numbers. And they'd have a guy, a person go out there, change the numbers every morning or maybe every hour, depending on, you know, depending on where we are with our gas prices. And now they just have the ability to have the red static letters. And so as, you know, as long as the electronic, I believe we, the modern terminology is electronic changeable typeface. So as long as something is able to be changed and not at a rapid pace, and also it's not some of these other signs, which basically, they're basically TVs, because the LEDs are so close together that they have moving images and everything, and those become an issue for distraction. So we would just consider language that would ensure public safety is still in keeping with the intent of the ordinance, but allow for the convenience of a, the typeface to be changed at a modest rate that doesn't distract. So, but yeah, we'll thoroughly lay that out.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.